Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order of the City Council Tuesday, March 18th. Could we please have a roll call? Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins.
Hello?
Mayor Watkins is joining us via Zoom tonight.
Hello, turn this microphone.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Dykens.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Staley is excused this evening. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. If you're able, could you please stand for the invocation given by Ken Miller of Grace Lutheran Church? As well, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Dykens afterwards.
Let us pray. Gracious God, bless our city Kingman and make it a place of safety for all people. Give us grace to work for neighborhoods to remain vibrant and whole. Where the lost and forgotten are supported and where the arts can flourish. Make the diverse fabric of Kingman be a delight to all who live and visit here. Give us a strong bond to unite people around the common goals for the good of all. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody. We have a couple of changes to our agenda. So for those of you that are joining us, we are going to move 6B up to just before appointments. So 6B will be above number one. And we are going to pull item D from the consent agenda. And the reason for that is the backup documentation was not made available to the public. So that'll be on next meeting's agenda. So that would be consent item 5D will be removed. All right. So item 6B, presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding citizen survey of revenue options. At their January 8, 2025 meeting, the City Council approved the contract with High Ground Incorporated to perform a survey of city residents to determine the viability of possible revenue sources. High Ground Incorporated has completed the survey and will present those findings to the City Council. Council may discuss the findings and provide direction to staff based on those findings. Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have Paul Bence with High Ground with us tonight, and he'll be presenting on his findings.
Welcome, Paul.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having me here today. Can you hear me okay before I start talking too much?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Fantastic. My name is Paul Bence. I'm the Senior Vice President of Research and Strategy at High Ground Public Affairs. We conduct a lot of statewide, regional, and local surveys. We are five-time winner of Best Pollster from the Arizona Capital Times and have already conducted more than a dozen surveys through the beginning of this year and do quite a bit of work for local communities in looking at these types of taxation issues. I'm going to share my screen and walk you through some survey questions. Feel free to stop me if you have questions or if there's additional information that you need. Always the scariest part here. Are you seeing a single version of the presentation right now?
We are seeing the presentation, and now it's full screen.
Okay, perfect. So we conducted the survey February 17 through the 19 of this year. It's a 300-sample survey. It is a margin of error of 5.6% plus or minus with 95% confidence interval. What that means is if we were to do this survey 95 out of 100 times, we'd be within five points of all of the data points that you have here. For a community of your size, a 300 sample of live callers, this is all residents that were spoken to on the telephone by live operators. We called home phones and direct dialed cell phones as required by law, and we asked the individuals specifically from the voter file. We have their age, party, region, all that information in the file so we know exactly who we're talking to to ensure that we get a reliable sample. Part of the reason we do that is sometimes, you know, people don't know how they're registered to vote, or maybe they're feeling a little younger that day, so they might not give us the appropriate age. So instead, we do all of that from the voter file itself. We balance this to look like likely voters, voters that would likely show up in a tax election. And a couple of things to note is that over about 70% or so of the respondents are over the age of 50 with 55% over the age of 65. When we talk about a lower turnout election, the likely voting universe is a much older portion of the electorate, and so we ensure that we reflect the data when we go through this to more accurately reflect because our goal here is to tell you what you need to hear, not necessarily what you want to hear. And so we do our very best to eliminate any bias from our research. We also balance it by party. It's a pretty heavily Republican sample, as I'm sure you're all very much aware. About 65% of the respondents were Republican, 17% Democrats, 13% is PND, Party Not Declared or Unaffiliated. There is not an independent party in the state of Arizona, but this is what you traditionally think of as the independents, and then we used zip codes to balance it throughout the area as well. We do a couple of warm-up questions to start. We started with the right direction, wrong direction, and I have some good news for you. Your hard work is paying off. 53% of the community thinks that Kingman is headed in the right direction compared to only about 24% that think it's headed in the wrong direction, and there's even an opportunity for improvement with 23% that don't know or didn't answer. If I were to ask the direction of the country right now among respondents in Arizona, we're generally in about the 30% right direction range. If I ask the direction of the state, it's in the 40% range, but you're in the 53% right direction. Local government is in fact more popular, and this is in line with a lot of the other communities that we measure, as we see a large majority of people pretty happy with the overall direction of their community. You can see the 50- to 64-year-olds in particular are much more optimistic at 63% right direction, maybe a little bit lower in the 65 and older, but I would point out that there is a plurality, not quite a majority, but a plurality of that 65 and older that think the community is headed in the right direction. When it comes to top issue facing the city, streets and transportation was number one with 27%, 27.7, and then high costs and inflation was number two at 19%, and jobs in the economy was third at 18%. I would note that there are some tax and cost sensitivities that we see within this. You have about 40% or so of respondents talking about high costs, jobs, things like that, and that will be relevant later when we talk about taxation issues. From an age perspective, the 29 and under age group as well as the 40 to 49 are more concerned about jobs and the economy, whereas the other age groups, particularly 50 to 64 and 65 and older, care a little bit more about streets and transportation. The last thing, we talked about job performance. You have about a quarter or so that give you an excellent or very good, and then another 49% that think the mayor and council's overall job performance is okay. So about 75% plus three-quarters of respondents gave you a very positive rating. Only about 15% of respondents gave you a poor or failing. You can see in the right there, we did the excellent and very good, so this is sort of the fours and fives. In particular, the 40 to 49-year-olds were very optimistic about the council performance, and then you still had pretty solid numbers of the 50 to 64 as well as 65 and older. The last thing that we tested before we got into sort of the tax issues was sort of the overall ranking of municipal services. This is on a scale of one to five. It's the Likert scale, so one being in this case, poor or failing, to five meaning excellent or very good. So think of it like a star rating, like a Yelp review. So anything above three is very positive, and you can see most of the services, police, fire, medical, and parks in particular, all score very well. We like to see items above 3.5, and all of those do very well. You can see the police has a 65% that gave it an excellent or very good. Fire and medical had 66% excellent or very good. Parks was at 57% excellent or very good. The lower ones on the scale, definitely the lowest one that we measured is concerns about street maintenance. Only about 14% gave that an excellent or very good, and new facilities, only about 18% gave that an excellent or very good. The recreation facility, not quite as high as parks at 3.15, but still a fairly positive score. So overall, what we see here is that people are generally pretty positive about the direction of the city. Fire, police, and parks are all very well-regarded, and three out of four respondents think that the mayor and council is doing a pretty good job. So before I go into the taxes, are there any questions about this section so far?
Council, any questions? Nope, please continue. Thank you.
Okay. So then we looked at tax items, and basically what we did is we looked at both the property tax as well as the sales tax. And half the folks got questions about a property tax first, and half the folks got questions about a sales tax first, and then we switched them so that we weren't adding any bias by asking about one tax after another. This allows us to make an apples-to-apples comparison between the two and get an idea of what we're looking at. You know, polling is quantitative research. What that means is we can ask questions, and we ask the same questions to every person and get their overall impression of the item. We use some reason statements that I'll talk about at the end to sort of ascertain why they feel one way or another. If I ask 300 people why, we would get 300 different responses, and that's more of a focus group question. So from a polling perspective, we use this measurement to give us an idea. And so I'm going to go through the property tax items first, but just bear in mind that half the folks got a sales tax option first as well. So we tested various programs or items that could potentially be funded or used for what a property tax might be used for. And you can see the top three items and really the top tier of items were all transportation-related: pothole repair and pavement preservation, street maintenance and repair, street improvements. Those are the things that the voters thought would be most important if there were to be a property tax. Response times for public safety, additional police officers, additional EMTs, and additional firefighters were sort of in the second tier. Part of this, I think, has to do with the fact that you saw on that previous slide that we were just on, that people are generally pretty happy with their public safety. They want to ensure response times remain low, and that's certainly the top item in the public safety realm. But one of the things that we saw here is it didn't quite have the same level of support that we've seen sometimes in other communities that have larger concerns about public safety. In this case, what we saw is sort of the transportation issues had the highest sort of regard of what they wanted to look at. But when we tested an actual ballot issue regarding a property tax, what we basically found is that about 30% of respondents said that they would vote yes, and 63%, almost 64% said that they would likely vote no. And two things to note here is that the definitely yes to definitely no is about three to one or more against the proposal, and then the probably yes and probably no is split pretty evenly. The largest group of opposition, as you can see here though, is in the 50 to 64 range and the 65 and older range. One of the things that they identified as being on a fixed income is certainly a large concern for some of these respondents, and the idea of a property tax definitely caused concern for them. Also, the permanent nature of a property tax, that if they were to pass an issue like a property tax, that it would never, it does not necessarily sunset, that was also of concern when it comes to a property tax. On the sales tax, we tested more dedicated sales tax and went more on sort of the public safety route. The highest response on a sales tax was 4.23 for reducing crime. Again, so four out of five, it's a solid score, and what we saw is it's pretty similar to some of the response times, but that was sort of the highest one. Maintaining levels of service is sort of in that next tier, and then staffing, training, emergency equipment is in middle tier, and then a lower tier for ambulance services and purchasing additional ambulances. Overall, when we tested the voter appetite for a sales tax, it does better than the property tax. As you saw, the property tax was about 30% yes. This is at 40.7, about 41% yes. The definitely yes to definitely no in this category is about two to one instead of three to one. So there's still quite a bit of opposition. You've got a 53% that say no on this item. Now, with the margin of error, it could be 45% yes, but it still doesn't reach sort of that 50% threshold that we like to see on items. When we do this type of polling, for something to remain viable or be viable, we like to see the issues or the items closer to that 50% or 55% to have a strong chance of passage at the ballot box. Now, polls are a snapshot in time. Certainly with public education and public information, you could see this number increase, but in this case, even with the sales tax, we generally saw more folks were inclined to vote no compared to vote yes. The intensity is not quite as high, though, in the 50 to 64 range as well as the 65 and older. We saw those were closer to 70% opposition, but really what we're seeing here is still more no than yes. And so what we try to dig in is the reasons why. And so, as I mentioned, we tested some reason statements, and investing in public safety was a very positive response, and people were motivated by the idea of investing in public safety. But the two things to note is that they have almost equal efficacy as concerns about being on a fixed income. As I mentioned, this is probably the largest measurement of being concerned, and obviously with over half the electorate over the age of 65, it certainly plays a role in this. But that fixed income concern, this is probably the highest I've seen it measured in any community that we've done survey research in. It's just a pretty high number, and you can see that the notion of investing in public safety is about the positive at 4.11 is almost equal to the negative concerns about fixed income. Similarly, permanent tax, as I mentioned, when it comes to concerns about a property tax, also had a high amount of negativity at 3.81. So what we see here is generally we like to have two or three reasons that are more positive than the negative ones. In this case, we have one, but we have two very outstanding negative arguments near the top here. One other thing to note, though, is it's not just a general anti-tax sentiment necessarily. We tested this idea that taxes go up, they never go down. I'm sick and tired of taxes. We shouldn't have any more taxes. That's not as big of a motivator as the fixed income. Neither is any concerns about regressivity of sales tax. In fact, what we generally found is that people are less concerned about regressivity but more concerned about if a tax were permanent or how it would impact them being on a fixed income. So the last thing that we measured is if you were given a choice to generate additional funds, so after they learned about a potential property tax, after they learned about a potential sales tax, we said, what would you prefer? And what we found is 36% of respondents, their top choice would be general obligation bonds for specific projects. Second would be a sales tax at 27%, and in third, in a pretty distant third, was the primary property tax at about 14%. I would note that there is not a majority for any single solution here. You know, what we find is the most palatable among the electorate was the idea of a general obligation bond, but it's still not reaching sort of that 50% range, they're kind of divided all over the place here. So that's what we found in the survey, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or go back to any spot if you have anything that you'd like to follow up on.
Thank you, Paul. Council, do you have any questions for Paul? No? I have a few.
Okay.
So I just, I want to know, when you go back to ranking property tax items, it seems to be all about streets, you know, potholes, maintenance, repair, that's the top. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out the questions for ranking property tax items and ranking sales tax items, because when you do the ranking sales tax items, were the questions more geared around public safety? And that's why those rankings are what they were for sales tax items?
Yes. So when we looked at the property tax items, what we were trying to gain is get a sort of a fuller view of some potential items that might be funded. What we did with the sales tax is we took the approach of a sales tax, not just a general sales tax for general government or going to the general fund. We asked them if they would be supporting a dedicated sales tax for public safety. So that's why the sales tax items are more public safety in nature compared to the property tax, which is a little bit broader. That was sort of the approach that we took, is we've seen it sort of effective way in other communities. If you dedicate the source to a place so that we can measure things like transparency, voters know exactly where the money would be going, that we found that to be effective and impactful in previous research.
Okay. I just, I have some concerns because we have a greater population that lives outside of our city but drives into our city and uses our roads and, you know, such. And so I would have liked to see a question that was if you were to have a dedicated property tax towards street, roads, pavement preservation, you know, what would you be more inclined to do? So I would have liked to see a compare and contrast on those two. Public safety is absolutely a huge, you know, component, and we've been very supportive of them during the last budget round. Our streets, we've got to find an income stream for that down the road. So I guess, to me, it appears that the polling was a little skewed towards, when it came to sales tax, it was skewed towards public safety.
Paul, if I may, Vice Mayor. So we actually did look at that, and that was part of the discussion as we were going into setting up these questions with Paul. And the idea was, when we were looking at the property tax, to get that ranking on, basically the idea was in order to cover as many topics and get a good feel for where everybody would be on this item. So when we did the property tax, we looked at public safety, roads, streets, basically the gambit on it. But then in order to dial in a little bit tighter on the sales tax, that's where we focused, just on the public safety. So I think, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be, you could transfer those findings on importance from the property tax over to the sales tax, and that would transfer. So you could say, you know, pothole repair, pavement preservation, where we covered all of the topics is a top item. You could also say if we were to do a sales tax, that that would be the same top item. I think the concern that I'm seeing, and I think that Paul's sharing, is both items, both the property tax and the sales tax, really there's not a lot of support either way, no matter what the item is, you know, what it's being dedicated to. So I don't know if that helps explain kind of the philosophy behind it.
It does. It does. So my other question, thank you, Manager Walsh. My other question on the property tax, those individuals that were polled, did you know if they were property owners when they were polled, or was the random selection a mixture? You really?
We did not ask that question because they would be eligible to vote whether or not they own the property. So we didn't ask if they own any property. We just, their ability to vote in your elections helped define that. And to what Manager Walsh was talking about, in fact, yes, any of the street improvements that, those two lists do translate, and so, yes, street improvements were the highest issue. You add that combined with the fact that it was the number one issue facing the city. I think you could certainly translate that. What we were trying to avoid in the way we asked the questions is negotiating with the voters and creating a false positive. You know, there's a traditional negotiation tactic where you say, you know, foot in the door or door in the face. You start with a low number and then try to go higher, or you start with a high number that they put the door in the face, and then you keep going lower. What that runs the risk of when you do survey research is if you ask too many questions like that, you can end up negotiating with the voter to a spot where they say they would vote yes, but really they would actually still likely vote no. So we tried to keep it as pure as possible to give you sort of where we're starting right now with the two potential items. But yeah, so we certainly, I bet if we did measure a sales tax that was dedicated to transportation, it would do better, but I don't think it would suddenly be at the 50% range that we're talking about here.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I had. So you're looking for direction from Council?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have it available for Council to discuss, and if there is any direction that you'd like to provide, as we're currently in the middle of our budget, developing the budget and putting it together. So based on these findings, if there were any direction that Council would like to give, we'd be happy to take that direction. If this is, it could also be that this is just informative and gives an idea on the potential possibilities of a sales tax or a property tax.
Okay. All right. Council, any comments? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor, before we go too much further, could you read that, the blurb right after the Pledge of Allegiance?
I was going to do that before we moved into appointments. So, good timing. The Council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. All right. So we are going to move to item number one on our agenda, appointments, golf commission appointments. At their January 21, 2025 meeting, the City Council created the Golf Commission. Staff has received 29 applications to serve on the Golf Commission. Of those applications, 24 are City of Kingman residents and five are of the Greater Kingman Area residents. City code allows for up to two applicants of the Greater Kingman Area if they have special knowledge, skills, or expertise that is needed. A Greater Kingman resident is defined as non-city residence with a Kingman address. Residency and voter registration has been verified. Since this is the initial appointment of members to this commission, the Council will need to make three appointments to a term ending December 31, 2026, excuse me, and four appointments to a term ending December 31, 2028. This will align the Golf Commission's terms with the other boards and commissions. Council discretion. Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As you mentioned, the City Council created the Golf Commission, and we have put out the notice for applications. We received the applications. Those have been provided to you. The commission has been created. At this point, the mayor has not yet selected a liaison for that, so upon his return, we'll probably have that selection for a liaison. But at this point, we just ask for Council's direction on selecting those members for that commission.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Per ARS 38-431.03A1, the City Council may enter into an executive session to review the commission applications. What's the pleasure of the Council?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
We have a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second?
After you do that, I apologize.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Cooper.
Because those applicants are not able to go into an executive session, they do have the right to say, I don't want my application to be discussed in executive session. So we should probably ask if there's anybody that would object to that, because then we'd have to hold a discussion about their application in public.
Of those applicants that are sitting in the audience, if you do not wish to have your application discussed in executive session, would you please come forward and state that you do not want your application discussed in executive session? All right. Hearing none. We are going into executive session. Please feel free to stay tuned. The appointments for the Golf Commission are as follows. Dave Dale.
That's as a motion.
I'll make a motion. Yes. Excuse me. I'll make a motion. Dave Dale, Todd Ottenstrat, Sean Lawson, and Pat Moore will be appointed to a term ending 12/31/28. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Brendan Page, Carol O'Connor, and Ricky Johnson will be appointed for the term ending 12/31/26. That is a motion. Do I have a second?
All seconds.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Those of you that are wishing to leave, please feel free to exit. I'll give you a few moments. If you're staying for the meeting, please stay. Thank you all for your applications and your service. Moving on. Call to the public. Those wishing to address the Council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The Council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The Council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. We do have three individuals signed up for a call to the public. We do have three individuals signed up for a call to the public. We're going to start with Lori Voss Barthlow. You could please come up and state your name. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Council and Vice Mayor. I am Lori Voss Barthlow. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I am here about item 6F on your agenda, which is regarding the reconsidering of the traffic interchange renaming motion. And I wrote about this to all of you last week. I hope you got my letter, my email letter, and Vice Mayor Sam Lee, thank you very much for responding to me, I do appreciate it. I'm not really here in any major official capacity. I am heading the committee for the next all-years Bulldog reunion, which is a rather big event in our city every five years. And I moderate the Associated Facebook page. And some of our alumni put forth the name of Gary Byrd as an idea for the rename. And it was revealed in the newspaper earlier this month that that option, the name of Mr. Byrd, received the second highest vote. But I also read in that same newspaper article, he was dismissed in favor of a different name that only received one vote. And I'm here because it was the City Council that put forth the idea of us voting. So we voted, and that name got the second highest votes. And I'm just asking if he can be reinstated for the final four consideration? I think that's fair, and that's really all I'm here to say.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Paul Gaines, you could come forth. State your name, please, and you have three minutes. Good evening.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, and Council members and staff, my name is Paul Gaines from Kingman, Arizona. Can everybody hear me? Right out the gate, I'd like to state that there is a private group that has agreed to pay for the name Flying Fortress, and I'm one of the members of this group, so if someone has any questions about that, I'd be more than happy to answer from anybody here or you guys. And I wrote a piece that appeared in the Kingman Daily Miner a week or two ago, and I'm just gonna read this real quick right now, and then I have something to show you. From the start, the interchange has been intended as a connector from I-40 to the airport. Our airport and industrial park exist solely because of World War II gunnery training for the B-17 Flying Fortress, excuse me. The name has a direct deep Kingman connection and also has international recognition. The name Flying Fortress would also be a well-deserved nod to the men and women who trained here and would honor those who sacrificed and fought for the freedom of the world. And besides that, it's a really cool unforgettable name as well. Let's be a part of history and take advantage of this very rare opportunity. Please go to the City of Kingman website and vote for Flying Fortress. Voting stops midnight, March 23rd. And I brought this little picture that I took off my office wall, and I know you guys have probably seen a lot of images of the airport and historic images of World War II and what was going on out here. I brought this one for a specific reason. I want to show everybody else out here just real quick, so they know what, they know what you're looking at. Now, I brought this one because there are several things here. Interestingly, there's also, in this area right here, this is one of the first airports, commercial airports that was here, and that's why Airway Avenue is called Airway Avenue. This was the first commercial, again, the first commercial airport, and it was promoted by Amelia Earhart and Charles Lindbergh for TAT, which became TWA eventually. And yes, they did spend the night downtown Kingman when they came through to do the grand opening of this field. And also, you can see, this is, this is Route 66 and the railroad going right across here. These B-17s were parked right up against the railroad. And it's really incredible that this many, this is only 1,200, I say only 1,200, there were five or 6,000 aircraft that were here. There were about half B-17s and half B-24s, and some other ones. But the road, when it gets built, the interchange, and when the road goes from I-40 to, to the airport, it's gonna happen to track right about through here, where all these B-17s were parked. I brought this to show scope and scale and to show what an impact this aircraft had even after the war. It was built solely for the training initially, but this is what is part of our community and what was here for so long and carries through with so many community members right now. That's all I have. So yes, I'm for Flying Fortress, you can probably tell.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. All right, we also have Gary Waters. Good evening, if you could state your name, please?
It's Gary Waters, Kingman, Arizona. I've lived here for quite a while. Vice Mayor, Councilman, basically, there's, there's a bit of confusion where we're at right now with the donations, which I think, I, I believe you guys brought this forward to try and clarify. As Mr. Gaines said, there are, there are people that are willing to donate. The problem is, they don't know if their donation is gonna go to the name they want to pick. And being somebody that jumped the gun and did donate, I, I noticed that on the page it said, do not enter anything in the comment unless you choose other or something like that, you know? And if you choose the actual donation for the plane, pretty much, you're not committing to anything when you donate to it. So there's some fear that if this doesn't go through, like, say, if we don't meet, say we get rid of the, the city matching, and people donate, A, the money's gonna go to God only knows what project, you know? Or B, if somebody donates to the project and, and another name is selected, they're in effect subsidizing a name they don't agree with. I'm for the Flying Fortress, you know? Originally, I wanted Charles Lindbergh or whatever. Maybe you guys could get some clarity on how these donations will be allocated. But I think we should probably pick some name, whether the name Ms. Voss brought forward, it's a good member of our community, what have you, but something that says something about our, our community, Rancho Santa Fe does not. The Flying Fortress, that's a symbol. It could actually be used in advertising or things like that. So we'd have another avenue besides the 66 Shield, which we use for everything. Like, if you go to Boulder City, they have the Art Deco dam designs and everything to kind of point back to the city. If you go to Lake Havasu City, they have the bridge, they use that to tie in with all their, their advertising. It'd be another interesting thing about our community that we could get out in the open and maybe, you know, help our businesses grow. So again, if there could be some clarification over how these donations will be used, it might help. Or if you could just outright, as longstanding members of this community, just make a decision and choose a name, which I'm hoping you, you choose the one I kind of agree with, you, you could be comforted knowing that there is a party willing to pay for the Flying Fortress name just outright, you know? We'll make it work, one way or another, so, thanks for hearing me, anyway, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Manager Walsh? If you could.
This is called the public?
Yes.
There's, you could, I apologize, you're just gonna have them put it on the agenda?
Yes, yeah, so we can clarify. Thank you. All right. That ends our call to the public. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. In my earlier comments, I did mention we had removed item D. Is there anything else that want, Council would like to remove?
5F and 5G.
Counselor Ward, 5F and 5G. Any other removals? Counselors? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, E, A, B, C, and E. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right. Item B will be at, excuse me. Item D will be on a future agenda item, just for the public's knowledge. Now, we're gonna go to Counselor Ward, item F, which I'll read. Approval of Magnet Drainage Improvements Change Order. On May 28th, 2024, the Council approved a proposal for storm water improvements at Magnet to alleviate the facility's flooding in the amount of $63,913.04 plus applicable fees and sales tax. This project included the installation of underground conveyance of storm water. The design did not include the connection of roof drains to the storm drain system. This proposed change order connects the roof drains to the system to convey drainage to existing retention areas. The attached change order will increase the original contract price by $5,860 plus fees and sales tax and will be paid from the Capital Projects Fund. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Ponte?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the Council.
Counselor Ward?
Okay, my question on that, Jack, is if the original question and problem was drainage, was it just an oversight that we didn't think to tie the building in, or is it?
The, we had looked at it, there were some conflicts that we weren't sure that we would clear, and so those weren't tied in to the design until we went out, we potholed it. Once we figured out that we could clear one of the lines, which ended up being a sewer, then we opted to go ahead and tie those storm drain, or those roof drains into the storm drain to keep as much water out of the parking lot as we could.
Okay, that's all I have. I just have a question.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item, on the consent agenda, item F. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item G, Authorization to Purchase a New Asphalt Recycler for Street Operations. The city's existing asphalt recycler is nearing the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced. The existing unit provides hot asphalt when suppliers are closed for use in potholes and utility cut patching. The fiscal year 2425 budget approved the purchase of a new asphalt recycler with an approved amount of $185,000, utilizing the GSA Cooperative Contract GS 30F-001BA. A quote was received in the amount of $199,670 plus applicable taxes and fees. The Highway User Revenue Fund will be utilized for the purchase and has capacity to cover the additional cost. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Ward?
Okay, my question on this, are we gonna do our own patching once we get that, Jack?
We, we actually patch all the time, so the answer is yes. We patch currently, we do supplement that just because of the volume of water patches that we have with contracts as well. Just the volume that comes in, our crews are unable to keep up with.
Will this give us the ability to do more of our own patching?
It absolutely will. That was part of the reason of replacing it. One, the unit we have is, as it noted in the packet, is nearing the end of its life. We bought it used in 2015, and so it does about a ton and a half to two tons per hour. The unit that's specked out that is up for approval will actually do about 10 tons per hour, so that will greatly improve our efficiency when we're heating up the asphalt and getting ready to go in the morning. And that coupled with the larger patching unit that you guys, or that you'll see in our, our budget, will greatly improve our efficiencies in that.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve 5G.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Ponte.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to action items. 6A, Ordinance Number 1972, Regarding Storm Water Basin Ownership and Maintenance. Council has requested that City staff draft an ordinance that addresses the ownership and maintenance responsibilities for new storm water storage basins. The proposed ordinance requires the developer to dedicate the drainage basins to an HOA for ownership and maintenance, or to retain the property and record an easement requiring maintenance in perpetuity by the owner. The ordinance does allow for the acceptance of regional facilities with approval by the City Council. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Garmon, welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council members. Feel like the summary sums it up pretty well. This is really something that we're proposing in response to Council saying that, that the city should no longer accept any retention basins or detention basins for ownership and maintenance. I worked with the City Manager, with the City Attorney, and the Development Services Director to come up with the language that's in the backup. We all feel like it pretty well states the city's position and protects the city in the instance that the landowner doesn't fulfill their responsibilities, we have some, some recourse, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Council, any questions? I just had one. I know it was important to the development community that this ordinance fall in line with the counties, what the county's doing, and my understanding is that it does?
Pretty much. The, the county's development regulations don't specifically mention an HOA, so that was something that may be a little bit different. I worked with the Development Services Director, and we checked a few different communities. This actually has a lot in common with the development regulations from the city of surprise. Most of the language is adopted from that. So, answer the questions.
Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I could add just a little bit to that. So the county, the county's policy is to not accept any of these basins for, for maintenance, so they don't allow them to dedicate to the county. So in that accord, basically, yeah, the city is in line with the county. We, we don't accept these basins for maintenance now. We do allow, and we heard some concerns from some of the development is, development community, is they didn't want to be forced to have to do an HOA. So this, this actually does allow for that. They can either, they can form an HOA if they'd like to in order to provide for the perpetual maintenance of the basin, or they can retain it themselves. If they choose to retain it themselves, they would just have to record an easement allowing for their perpetual maintenance of that, of that facility. So they have options here, but ultimately, the city will not be accepting any more of these.
All right, great, thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1972. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garmon. Item C, Consideration to Adopt Notice of Intent to Increase Water Rates. In fiscal year 2023, Wilden Financial Services was hired to complete a water rate study, which resulted in the adoption of new water rates that became effective on July 6, 2023. The water rate study included a five-year plan with proposed annual rate increases through fiscal year 2028. However, only fiscal year 2024 rate increases were brought before Council for approval at that time. As was recommended in the water rate study, the city must update the revenue sufficiency portion of the study each year. The study was updated in fiscal year 2024 and is now being updated for fiscal year 2025. City staff is bringing the results of the water rate study update to Council for consideration. Staff recommends Council adopt a notice of intent to consider increasing water rates and set a public hearing date. Ms. Moline, welcome.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, and good evening, and good evening, Council members. Tonight, we will review and discuss the water rate study update. Within the presentation this evening, we have the purpose of the update, we've got the summary of the calculated revenue increases, we also have the proposed rates, and then the comparisons to other communities. So what is the purpose of the update? Well, we do this every year, so although the water rate study was adopted back in 2023 and ultimately implemented in 2024, we don't adopt all of the rates over the five-year period at one time. So every year, we go back to the drawing table and make sure that we have sufficient revenues to cover the operating expenses, not just in the current year, but in the future years as well. And not just operating expenses, but capital expenses and all of the maintenance expenses. We also want to ensure that we maintain that 60-day cash reserve level. We do that through evaluating revenues, and if there is any sort of deficiency or sufficiency, then we evaluate the rates at that time. We typically do this with water at this exact same time, just as we're entering into budget season, so that we can capture the rate increases, if there are any, for the entire fiscal year. So, like I said, we do this every year. So last year, we performed this same study and looked over the five-year period. This year, as we looked at the current year, we noticed that there was a change, a pretty significant change that we weren't planning, and it was really related to two particular items. We found that our electricity costs had increased by over 30%, and we noticed that our overtime, we didn't estimate that correctly. Now, we know that we have water line leaks every single year, we weren't expecting them to be the same as what they had been in prior years, or even more, and so we didn't take that into account and didn't budget enough or estimate enough for for overtime. But the big number is the electricity. And so it's up $780,000 from what we expected, and that is primarily due to demand. Now, we're not adding so many customers to the customer base that would justify that cost, but as we add more customers to our base, the demand on the system just increases, and so that electric, electric also increases. I do want to point out that we have reached out to Unisource. We will be meeting with them at the end of this year, at the end of this week, actually, just to ensure that there isn't something that we're missing on the electricity. Is a service wrong? Are some reeds wrong? So we're going to confirm that with them, but we feel fairly confident that this will be the, um, the electricity going forward. So when we look at that first table in the, on the slide, we have last year's update as far as what the expenses were versus this year's update. And you'll see that year over year, especially this year, it's an 8% increase of where we thought we would be. And then in the out years, anywhere from four to almost 7%. The good news with this is that we're also seeing our revenue increase above where we thought we would be at this point in time, too. So it's a nice offset to the, um, higher-than-expected expenses. Now, with the rate revenue, I do just want to point out that water rate revenue is not as easy to predict as maybe our solid waste revenue is, and that is because rainfall has quite a bit of, um, direct correlation to consumption. So this year has been a very dry year, and so that is one of the reasons that we are seeing the, the revenues increase. Certainly, it doesn't change domestic use, but it definitely plays a role in the irrigation use for all users. So that is one of the reasons, uh, why we are seeing, uh, higher revenues than what we experienced or expected. So what does the financial plan now look like, uh, in the operating fund? And the operating fund is the fund that covers our people, our equipment, our operations, maintenance, all of the repairs to our system, utility billing, our engineering department. So last year, if we look at what the rate increases were going to be year over year, fiscal year '25 was 26.5%, 13% in fiscal year '26, 8.25% in fiscal year '27, and 2.5% in fiscal year '28. Nothing has changed with those rate increases as far as what we're proposing for this next year or in the next few years. Everything is in line with what we expected last year. So fiscal year '26, in order to continue to provide all of the, the monies to fund our operating and maintenance expenses, as well as maintain that 60-day cash reserve, it is a 13% recommended increase for fiscal year '26. The one difference is that in fiscal year '26, we are recommending to drop below the 60-day cash, uh, 60-day cash reserve to 52 days, but we'll pick that back up in fiscal year '27. So what do the rates look like with that recommend, with that recommendation? So these are our fixed rates, um, across the board, whether you're inside the city or outside the city. Again, it is a 13% increase. So you'll see that from, from currently, if you are a residential customer, you're paying $16.53 for the fixed rate of your water bill. Next year, it will be $18.68, or that's what staff is recommending if you are inside the city limits. And then as far as usage, uh, those rates will also increase by 13% over fiscal year '25. So currently, if you're using 3,500 gallons of water and you're inside the city limit, you're paying $1.87 per thousand gallons, up to that amount. Next year, it would be $2.12. We also have capital. I talked earlier that we want to make sure that we can fund our capital expenses as well, and so we have another fee that we impose on our water bill and to our customers that is called a capital renewal fee, and that is funded from a different fund. And it covers all of our big projects. So our capital improvement project, projects such as our service line replacements or our distribution line replacements, our automated meter replacements, all of those big projects is funded through this fee. Last year, the ongoing increase, we had proposed a 20% year-over-year increase. It is the same for this year. We'll ensure that the projects that are submitted over the next few years will be in line with what was presented last year. And so what do those fees look like? Those are also fixed fees. And so currently, if you're inside the city limits, as a residential customer, you're paying $5.16 as a fixed rate. Next year, it will increase by 20% to $6.19. So how do we compare to our neighbors? So we looked, of course, at our tri-city neighbors and then some other rural areas, and our current rate is pretty much in the middle at $33.39. The proposed rate for a residential customer who is using 6,000 gallons would be at $38.12. You'll see that Flagstaff, Chino Valley, Cottonwood, and Prescott are, have higher rates, and Prescott, uh, Prescott Valley, Bullhead City, and Lake Havasu have lower rates, uh, than ours. So what would be the next steps? The next steps are adopting a notice of intent, uh, to increase the water rates and scheduling a public hearing for May 20th. And then ultimately, on May 20th, whatever is decided at tonight's meeting would be brought to the public, and we would hold that public hearing to, to consider increasing those rates. And then depending on what council approves at that meeting, those rates would then go into effect July 1st. And with that, I will try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Moline. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Moline?
I do have a question. So I'm just curious, with Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City being so inexpensive comparatively with rates, can you just explain why that is? Or to the best of your knowledge, why that is?
Sure, so, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, for your question. So every system is different. The age of infrastructure is different as well, and we have not been able to afford to replace much of our infrastructure for, for many years. Much capital and, um, just our elevations are different, our gravity is different. We're in a completely different type of area than what those other cities are. I can't speak for Lake Havasu. I have no idea what condition their system is in at all. Perhaps they need to increase rates, too. I don't know what that looks like. I do know with Bullhead City, they recently purchased the Epcore system, and in talking with the city staff, we know that that, that system needs, uh, a water rate increase in order to improve and be able to operate and maintain it the way that they need and want to do it, but nothing has been brought forth, um, to the city manager or the city council. So that's where they are with that. And that, that's only been a couple of years, I believe, since they purchased that system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's the only question I had.
All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to move forward with adopting the, what's the verbiage I'm looking for here? The, the letter of intent?
A notice of intent.
Notice of intent, to move forward on the water rates.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to item D, consideration to adopt a notice of intent to modify solid waste recycling services and rates. In September 2024, staff presented council with a financial update on the solid waste system and reviewed the city's historical recycling programs, as well as discussed other recycling options. Council directed staff to research recycling program options and conduct a survey to gauge interest. The research and results will be shared in March of 2025. Solid waste service alternatives and rate options were discussed with the council in October and December of 2024. It was decided to survey customers on a solid waste service alternatives prior to adopting rate increases. A customer survey on recycling programs and solid waste services was released in January and remained open through February. Tonight, staff will present council with solid waste service alternatives and rate options, recycling program options and associated costs, and the customer survey results. Staff recommends council adopt a notice of intent to modify solid waste recycling services and rates and set a public hearing date for May 20th, 2025. Ms. Moline.
Thank you so much again, Vice Mayor, and good evening, and council members, good evening as well. So, uh, tonight, we will be covering the solid waste rate and recycling report with you. Vice Mayor did a great job of introducing what the item's going to entail. It will be a tag-team, uh, presentation with me and our public works director, Rob Owen. I will begin by covering the background, so where we have been so far with our solid waste, uh, service and rate options. I will then recap where we were in December, and then also share with you the customer survey results on the solid waste part of the survey. I'll then hand it over to Director Owen to cover the recycling options or present those to you. He will also cover the customer survey results for the recycling component of the survey. I'll then take it over again and basically summarize where we are today with solid waste, with the rates, the services, and then any sort of consideration that council might have for recycling, and then identify next steps. So, that seems easy, right? So, uh, on September 3rd, city staff brought to the council a solid waste rate report and some recycling considerations, and the recycling considerations were actually brought forth by the Clean City Commission, and we know that periodically, the city council does want to look at recycling, and so we brought forth a report on those options. At that meeting, the council directed staff to bring back the solid waste rate, uh, the solid waste rate services and potential rate increases, but to perform some research on recycling and conduct a customer survey. Uh, and we explained at that time that that would take some time, and we, we, we would bring the recycling information back to council for consideration around March, which is where we are this evening. Then in October, we brought to council the, the solid waste rate and service options. We were talking about increasing rates at 5.7%. We also looked at what a once-per-week option might, uh, or we, we were asked to look at a once-per-week option, so we brought back to council, adopted a notice of intent to increase those rates and hold a public hearing, and in December, we brought that information back to council. We presented a 5.7% increase for the solid waste rates. We also touched on a once-per-week option and talked about the costs of those. We had some members of the public at the time that did approach council and had some concerns about the increased cost to the solid waste system, and so the council opted to conduct a customer survey and get some more feedback from all of the customer base and not just the customers that approached, uh, the council that evening. And so we postponed the rate increase at that time and decided to conduct the customer survey and then bring all of this information back to you this evening. So that's the background on how we got to tonight. So what are our current services and rates? Our customers, our residential customers are currently paying $20.37 for twice-per-week pickup, and then you see a whole host of services that are offered for commercial customers. Let it be known that our residential customers are required to utilize the City of Kingman's trash collection, but the commercial customers can use a variety of trash providers. They do not have to use a City of Kingman service. We're fortunate that about 1,000 of them do. On our current rates, the Five Cubic Yard, the Six Cubic Yard, and the Eight Cubic Yard service have not been provided for quite some time. We no longer have the trucks for those types of services, and so just want to point out that those services are no longer provided. These rates became effective in July of 2021. At such time, our residential customers received a 3% increase, and our commercial customers received close to a 40% increase. And those fees, those rates have been in effect for, uh, almost four years. So when we evaluated the current financial plan, like we do every single year, what we found was that, uh, so similar to our water system, we also want to ensure that we can provide the solid waste service, run the operations, perform the maintenance, and maintain a 60-day cash reserve level. What we see is that by fiscal year '27, we start to turn towards the negative, and by fiscal year '28, we actually enter negative territory. We don't have cash reserves any longer. And so hence the reason why we bring to you a consideration for a rate increase. So at the December 2024 public hearing, we looked at that financial plan, and we proposed or, uh, provided you with a twice-per-week residential rate, what that would be, and that would be $21.53. We looked at a once-per-week, and that was $18.83. And then we looked at the commercial rates at, um, at the time. I do want to point out on the commercial rates, back in December, the two items that are in green font under the two column are a higher rate increase than 5.7%, and that's because those services are really identical to the residential service that's being provided, and so we wanted to make sure that those customers are paying the same as the residential, uh, customers. So those rates were supposed to go into effect on February 1st. As I shared, the rate increase at that time was 5.7% across the board, and, uh, basically the two times-per-week residential increase ranged over the five-year term of anywhere from $1.16 to $1.45 per year. Again, that was postponed. So we did conduct the customer survey. We started that survey the beginning of January. We, um, opened it for city residential service customers only, since those are the only customers that are impacted with solid waste rates. We included paper surveys in our monthly utility bills. We also offered the survey online on our website, and we did send social media posts out referencing the website for, uh, for users or for readers to be able to take that, to take that survey. We received back almost 2,400 surveys, and it was pretty much split between paper surveys and online surveys, about half and half is what we received. So what did the survey say about twice-per-week and once-per-week service? It was fairly overwhelming that 66% of our customers were willing to pay a higher rate to maintain twice-per-week pickup. And once-per-week service, 34% of our customers, uh, wanted to see that service reduced and then pay the lower rate. So now we're just going to move on into recycling options, and Rob will, or Director Owen will cover that.
Thank you, Tina. Vice Mayor, members of council. So, uh, as Tina had discussed, uh, council had asked us to look at some options, um, for, to bring back a recycling program. And in order, in order to get, uh, current prices, um, since it's been quite a while since we ran ours in-house, uh, we issued a ref, uh, request for proposals. That was issued on January 6th. The RFP was intended to receive current prices and develop accurate cost of service model. Requested proposals from bidders for the collection of, collection and processing of recyclable materials from the drop site location at Kingman Public Works. Bidders were given options, whether to accept, uh, baled or loose material and either transport from Public Works or have the material transported to them. Bits included processing fees for taking the materials and revenue sharing with the city, um, from the ultimate disposition of those materials. Multiple bidders could have been selected for different commodities. One response was received from a local bidder. Uh, the responses seemed acceptable, deemed acceptable, and the most cost-effective option submitted was the bailing of materials, um, at Public Works by us and the transportation of the materials by the bidder. So the, uh, based upon the responses to, or the response to the, uh, RFP, uh, we put together this kind of, uh, program outline. Program would be, uh, staffed, drop site location at Public Works. We're looking at 2.5 full-time employees. Uh, program hours would be Thursday from Saturday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and the commodities accepted would be mixed glass, cardboard, aluminum, tin cans, and number one and number two, plastics. Yeah, I guess it's just important to keep in mind that with a recycling program that's so, um, can, so contingent on, uh, the market conditions, that, uh, you know, if we were to initiate a program, we'd, we'd have to have that operational flexibility. Um, if we didn't have a place to, uh, to get rid of our materials collected, then we would have to stop collecting that particular commodity. So again, based upon the RFP received, um, the option would be, uh, the recommended option would be to, uh, uh, the recyclables would be baled, um, by our solid waste team and then transported by the contractor. So the, uh, net annual program cost estimate is $265,000. Uh, the build rate, if that was to be applied to all of our customers, would be $1.57 a month. We also calculated what a drop-off fee would be, um, if we limited it to We also calculated what a drop-off fee would be if we limited it to city customers, that's a little bit over $11, and then the drop-off fee if we included both city and county customers would be about $650. There's also been some discussion about a green waste program. You know, we wouldn't recommend a standalone green waste program. If we were going to proceed with the recycling program, it would be an option to consider. So green waste could be collected and shipped at Public Works. The woodchips could be made available to the public. The program would require the rental of a wood chipper. And the reason we specify a rental is if we were directed to move forward with this, we think that it should be on a trial period. We have no experience with this type of program. We'd like to see what the public's participation and interest would be before committing to it full-time. The total annual program cost would be estimated at an additional $230,000. Again, if the build rate were applied to all customers, that'd be an additional $1.37. So along with the customer survey detailing solid waste services, recycling service was also included, based upon the rate, if, you know, if the recycling was going to be added to trash service rate, 30, 31% of the people say they would pay between $3 and $3.50 a month for recycling services. And then if it was going to be a billed service, 33% of the people said they would be, they would pay between $5 and $10 per visit to the location. So I think that concludes my portion. Did you have any questions on any of the recycling information?
Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Walker? No? Okay.
Anyone else? Counselor Ward?
The only question I have, Rob, was on that, if they did the green recycling of the tree material.
Yes, sir.
Is that city only? Or is that any landscaper that wants to drop it off there?
Well, and that's kind of why we didn't include the, or couldn't come up with, I guess, a fee per visit, because, yeah, we'd have to clarify some of that. You know, right now, we, we allow some of the landscape firms to take material out to the Hilltop Waste Water Treatment Plant. That's, that's a separate program. You know, that's material that we utilize to process our solid waste, our bio-salads out to plant.
Yeah, that's hardwood only, isn't it?
Well, yes, sir. And so I think those are things we'd have to kind of identify through a trial program if we were going to do it, but we weren't really able to come up with a drop-off fee for the green waste at this time.
Okay. That's all I have.
I did have a question, Rob. So I just want to clarify that what I'm reading is correct. So the customer survey results for recycling said 31% said they would pay between $3 and $3.50 if it was available as a, cover the cost of the program, but it would, if we were to apply it to, across all customers, it would be a charge of only $1.57. Is that how I am interpreting that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I guess the, I guess the reasoning behind that is that we had to get out early on the survey portion of it, and so the, the way this question was written was based upon what it cost us the last time we were recycling. So this proposal actually came in a lot lower than the last time we were recycling, because we had a better response as far as us getting revenue sharing back and the processing fees a little bit, being a little bit lower at this time. So, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So last time we did recycling, it was about $3 to $3.50?
Yeah, it was, it was right around half a, half a million, right around half a million dollars for the program.
And is that fluid? Just be, I mean, is that a fluid number two depending on the market rate?
Absolutely.
So that would be something that would be, that could be adjusted depending on the market?
Yeah. Again, that would, that would, that would kind of dictate the need for that flexibility, you know? If all of a sudden, you know, a certain commodity market bottoms out, then, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to keep accepting it and stockpiling it, hoping that, you know, the price has turned. I think we, you know, we'd have to be able to change what we were willing to take and what we had access to dispose of.
Right. So is the $1.37 that you propose, the build rate applied to all customers, or excuse me, $1.57? Well, it's conflicting, I think.
No, yeah.
One slide it says $1.57, one site, one in the text, it says $1.37.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The $1.37 is specifically for the green waste portion of it.
So is the $1.57 enough of a buffer for any kind of market fluctuation?
Again, I think it would, it would, we'd still have to have that kind of flexibility built in, because those markets can change. Obviously, they changed substantially since the last time we did this. They've improved substantially. But while we were doing it, they got much worse while we were doing it. So it would be enough to proceed under the proposal we have if we were able to enter into the contract.
That's just my concern, is hoping that there's enough of a buffer there with the market fluctuation. I, I just don't want it to cost more and then us have to subsidize that, because that's, that's not a good program model. Thank you.
If I can just share, Vice Mayor, on that, we did also just assume that we weren't going to receive any revenues in this program, and what could that potentially cost the rate payers, and that would be about $1.90 in, per month if we received no revenues for the program.
Okay. So worst-case scenario, $1.90. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Any other questions?
Anybody else have any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, just, just in relation to your question, as, as was mentioned, we looked at the two options of both, you know, a monthly fee for all customers, but then we also looked at just a drop-off fee for customers that are coming out. That, that drop-off fee, if we included the county, came in at, at around $6.55 per drop. So just wanted to include that portion as well. Thank you.
All right. So kind of recapping and moving on to what this request is or what the proposed rate increase is now that we're at this time in the year, it would be, so, so we have a few different slides here. We've got our once-per, we've got, first of all, the date of where we originally increased rates back in July of '21, and then if the rate increases were to go in effect, it would be July of '25, July of '26, and so on. We have a table of what the once-per-week rates would look like, a table of what the twice-per-week rates would look like today, and what the twice-per-week rates looked like back in December when they were presented to you. So the once-per-week rates, if that was the option to, that we moved forward with, those would go into effect July of 2025, and it would start at $18.97, and then thereafter would be a 6.5% increase year over year in order to sustain. And then the twice-per-week rates, which is the staff's recommended rate just based on the survey results, would, currently we're paying $20.37. That would be a 6.5% increase in July of '25, and then the same increase year over year. So that would be a $1.32 increase next year, next fiscal year or in July. And in comparison to what was proposed in December, it is a slight increase. And I think I had shared that it would be an increase because we were losing the revenue that was going to be generated from February to, to June, so that there would be a higher increase year over year because of that. So that's, that's what that looks like. I also want to just touch on the boxes at the bottom of each of the bigger tables as far as the other options that we're proposing. So the residential uncontained trash pickup, or what we call extra trash pickup, that resident, residential people can call up and ask for our solid waste crew to come and pick up trash, big bulk trash in their yard, we are recommending to increase that to $27.45. And we are also recommending to add a commercial uncontained trash pickup or an extra trash pickup for our commercial customers. So we used to do this prior to July of 2021, and when we established the new rates, we decided to omit that rate, that there wasn't necessarily a need for it. However, however, over the last few years, we are still actually picking up some of those additional trash pickups that are outside of the regular services that the commercial customers are using and not charging anything for that because we don't have a rate established. So we're hoping to establish a rate for that. And again, looking at the cost of the service overall, it's about $79 a pickup. We pick up about 150 to 160 of those a year, and we've been doing that the last couple of years, free of, free of charge. And that's really for, I would say, mattresses and things that are just left next to our commercial customer containers, and so we pick those up as an abatement sort of thing, but we're proposing to charge that. And then, so those are the solid waste service options and rates. And then what does the proposed financial plan look like? Well, better than what it did, or better than what it does without the rate increase. So you'll see now, instead of depleting our cash reserves in fiscal year '28, we will now sustain a 60-day cash reserve minimum level in fiscal year '28, fiscal year '29, and fiscal year '30. So what do the recommended rates look like for residential and commercial service? This is, and what would they look like if they were adopted at the May public, certainly a notice of intent adopted this evening, and then at the public hearing in May, and then ultimately effective in July? The rates for residential service and the two rates for commercial service that are the same services residential would increase to $21.69, and then you see the rate table for all of the other commercial customers. Again, it's a 6.5% increase across the board, and then the two extra trash rates as well. And then the recycling service options and rates. Director Owen just talked with you about what that could look like. So the recyclables that would be bailed by our solid waste team and then having a third-party service provider transport those, net annual program cost of $265,000, if this was something the council wanted to add to our monthly rate, would be $1.57 that would be applied to all of our customers. If we wanted to just offer the service to our city customers and have them pay a fee at the Public Works facility, it would be $11.05. If we wanted to also allow county customers to participate in that program, it would reduce the drop-off fee to $6.55. And then there's the green waste option that Rob also talked about in his presentation. So the next steps is direction from the council on how to proceed and what type of notice of intent to adopt, and then ultimately holding a public hearing in May, and then adopting whatever rates the council ends up approving at the May meeting, those would become effective in July. And with that, I'll answer any other questions that you might have.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Moline? We do have two members of the audience that have asked to speak, so can we hold our discussion until after they speak, please? All right. Wayne Hollins, would you like to come up to the podium, please? State your name for the record.
Wayne Hollins, Golden Valley, Vice Mayor and Councilmember. I specifically want to address the green waste option. I, I'm glad to see it's even being discussed, let alone whatever happens to it. My question would be, would we rent a wood chipper or grinder on a full-time basis? Or are we going to buy one? If we're only going to do it once or twice a year or whatever, that doesn't give a very steady supply of the green waste for the customers to use on, and put on their properties. And based on my experience as the water conservation education consultant with the Big Sandy Natural Resources Conservation District, a two-month trial is pretty ambitious. It's probably easier to get them to drop off the stuff at the place, landfill, whatever. It might be more difficult for them to figure out what to do with it if they picked it up. And that being said, that's probably the cheapest and easiest way to do two things, reduce the stormwater runoff and to improve the soil and the organic matter in the soil so we'll have a chance the water can actually go into the ground. So it's, that's pretty easy once you can get the product, and that's been the problem. Not everybody has a chipper, and not everybody has a tree. So we need to have a steady supply, but we need to educate the people why use that and why put it on their property. If they don't know that, then they're just going to be looking at dropping it off, and we're going to end up with a mountain of green waste out there that's really not being used. So I think a big thing would be to educate the public in more ways than one, because you can't just do one thing and everybody be, get the idea. So that would be the, a major suggestion that we educate the public what to do with the stuff once we get it and have a steady supply of it if we're going to do it. And it just takes, for every 1% of organic matter you can increase in the soil, that's up to 20,000 gallons of water that'll go into the ground instead of running off down your street. So, per acre. So that's, it, it has a great benefit, and water has been an issue here for a long time, but mostly talking about it, but, so if we can actually do something, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollins.
Good evening.
I'm going to read mine, because I had put my thoughts down. Thank you, Kingman City Council, for giving me this opportunity to speak regarding solid waste services. A recent survey was created for the citizens of the city to respond to the needs of this service. I, for one, did not receive the survey as many others that I spoke to. I did, though, complete it by getting one from the water department. My question was, how was the survey offered to the community to obtain an accurate opinion? And when you look at 2,200 responses compared to the amount of water users and service people, I mean, people that receive this service, that's kind of low. We, as a community, need to look at the future with cost and services. I have lived here for 45 years. From the beginning, the city has always had two pickups per week of garbage solid waste. I've been told many times that it is required to have two. Is this a state law or a city ordinance? Maybe it is time to make some changes. Our community is growing and the demand will increase. With this being said, will the solid waste department be able to keep up with twice-a-week pickup? I am asking that the council consider a once-a-week pickup and freeze the fees at this time. Some say that they need twice, and that is where you have offered an additional can. Yes, I have observed on my street overflowing cans of cardboard. Since COVID, I and others have made many purchases through Amazon, QVC, Home Chef, et cetera, which has increased the cardboard content in the individual cans. At the time, at one time, our city has had large refuge containers for recycling located at Bashes, Centennial Park, Louise Avenue, et cetera, which I used. It was well-used by the public and always full. Yes, there were times when the right content wasn't put in the right container. For some reason, they were removed, and this is something that I wish that they would put back so that the people have an easy access. I, for one, am not driving down to City Public Works, and there's a lot of people that don't have the access to go down there. The city for years has been so negative about recycling. The last program was 2020, and it has been said, and it is time that a program be put in place and save our landfills. There are several recycling companies that I'm sure will be willing to work with you. Also, in the slides here, it was stated that Lake Havasu had the lowest water rate of everybody in the community. Do I have to stop?
Go ahead. Finish your thought.
And they have a private service in their community that picks up both garbage and recycles because each family, or each home has two cans. So, it's something to look at. At the previous meeting, citizens spoke of being on a limited income. We all are, just not the retirees. You raise the fees with no changes or benefits, which are more than allowed in my budget. Where am I supposed to get the extra money? When I was employed and now retired, I couldn't go to my employer and tell them that there had been an increase and I need ten dollars extra for water. It just doesn't work that way. Please don't price us out in our utilities that we cannot afford to live here, like others who have had to move because of the same reason. It is time to look over the situation and come up with an agreement that will work for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Does staff want to address comments?
Thank you. Um, as far as Mr. Hollins' comments, uh, our plan would be to rent a chipper. Um, we'd rather not, since we're working out of the Public Works yard, we'd rather not start, uh, a brush pile because I think we all know how brush piles go and they kind of get away from you. So, I think we'd be able, we'd rather stay up on, uh, the chipping and, uh, have that supply available um, as we, as we brought it in. Uh, and I agree that, uh, education on the value of, uh, you know, wood chips as an organic supplement to, uh, to soils, it, it would be valuable. And I think, you know, we're fortunate in that we've got a, a, a great commission in the Clean City Commission that I think would really help us, uh, get that word out. Uh, Mrs. Marquez's comments, just to clarify, on the, um, twice-a-week pickups, um, that currently is mandated in the Arizona Administrative Code. Um, it does allow for a waiver to be granted to allow once a week. Um, typically around the state of Arizona, those waivers, waivers have been granted um, for communities that have implemented curbside recycling, and that's able to count as their second pickup of the week. I can try to answer you the questions to my head.
All right. Counsel, do you have any other questions for Rob? No?
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Moline?
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for, um, our customers voicing their concerns and opinions. I wanted to address a couple of the items that Ms. Marquez, uh, mentioned. She talked about that she, uh, did not receive the utility bill in her, uh, in her u, uh, I'm sorry, the survey, in her utility bill. We didn't, we did include, uh, the survey to all of our solid waste customers, which is not all of our water customers. It is just the city customers. So, about thirteen thousand customers is what we sent that out to. So, paper surveys were included in the bills. If it, if we have a customer that is an electronic, uh, billing customer, they get a notification in email that their bill is available. They then have to drill in, unfortunately, to have to pull up that survey, which is why we did offer the survey online and also offered it at the utility billing counter. And our customer service reps, uh, to Ms. Marquez's point, did offer that for customers to take at the counter. Uh, so, of the thirteen thousand ten customers that we sent it to or that were avail, that could respond, we had twenty-four hundred customers respond, and that is about a twenty percent response, response rate. Uh, I also just want to clarify that the Lake Havasu's solid waste rate is actually proposed, is actually high, slightly higher than ours. I think that, uh, Ms. Marquez was, was looking at the water rates, and their rates are definitely lower than what our current and proposed, uh, rates are. So, thank you for the opportunity to respond.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Moline? All right, thank you. Okay, counsel. What's the pleasure of the counsel?
I have a couple of things to talk about. Two years ago, I reached out to a subcontractor trash collection, and I provided them the tonnage from the manager's office that they collect. And they went back, took about two weeks, came back to me and said there was no way they could compete with the City of Kingman. So, that told me that we were down there. And I mean, we all know what's happened with fuel, insurance, and all that. That's just one comment.
Counsel member Walker, can you please pull your mic forward?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you.
My other two is, uh, we have sixty-six percent of the people that took the poll saying they want two times a week. And I personally agree with that. We have thirty-one percent saying they would use recycling if it was between three and three-fifty, uh, three dollars and three-fifty, three dollars and fifty cents a month. Um, I would consider one-time-a-week pickup if we had curbside recycling. And I don't think that was an option provided to us, was it? I mean, um, maybe that way, but if not, I, I, I'm sticking with two times a week, personally.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Walker. Anyone else have any comments? Counsel Ward?
I've, the two times a week is, it looks like the most favored option, and we were pretty sure of that before. But the recycling, I, I don't, I'm not at all in favor of the recycling, you know that. It's, uh, to me, everybody's paying for what some people use, and I, I don't see that as, I've seen too much of the recycling that ended up just going to the dump. No part of it.
So, no part of having it build across the, the users, or no part, what about a drop-off?
If they want to recycle, I don't have a problem.
So, the drop-off, you could be in favor with?
But as far as building that across the board, I'm a no.
Okay. And Counsel Dykens?
I agree, uh, with that as far as, I don't think everyone should have to pay towards recycling if they're not using it. Whereas, if, uh, if we're doing a drop-off and you have to pay for it, that's, that's another thing. And I would, not seeing the prices, I would open it up to outside the city to help drop the cost. And, um, I don't, because it wasn't offered, I don't see the option of curbside recycling as one of the two trash pickups.
Okay. Counsel Savage? No?
I just had one, one question. On the green waste option, that would be a build rate. The only option is to, uh, bill that rate to all customers if we select to opt-in for the green waste option. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. I think just based upon the, kind of the lack of information, you know, we don't have a track record. We didn't know, you know, we knew how much we were getting from the drop-site location before for recyclable materials. So, it would be hard to, uh, establish a rate, uh, for that.
And we don't have an option for a bill, well, no, we don't, never mind. Um, how, what's the temperature of the council for the green waste option?
I'm not in favor of it if, if, if the fee is spread out over the entire community. I should not have to pay for something I'm not using.
Okay. All right. I am, um, of the opinion to go with the twice-a-week pickup. It was, I mean, I, I wanted the survey because I wanted to see what the public wanted. I, I'm happy with a once-a-week pickup, but I understand, you know, when I have heard from several families that that's just not sufficient, and, you know, they don't want to pay for an extra can. So, um, twice-a-week, uh, pickup seems to be the most favorable amongst our community. I do not agree with the, um, recycling billing across all the users. If you want to recycle, I feel like it should be a drop-off and a pay per, um, user. To Ms. Marquez's, uh, comments, I did like having the convenience of those recycle bins around the community. So, I don't know, I can't remember if we talked about putting those around the community or just in certain places to where you don't have to drive out to Public Works to drop off. So, could you help me with that, Rob? I can't remember.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the, our experience before, uh, with the remote locations, they were, they were unstaffed. And the contamination level of, of garbage getting disposed, uh, in the containers with the recyclable materials, um, got to a very high level. Um, that's the re, that was the main reason, um, that we brought the containers in and established the drop-off location at Public Works, where we have people there to help people, uh, recycle and be able to keep the contamination, um, out of materials. Um, when they were out in the field, because basically we were hauling those, um, uh, bringing those back to Public Works and dumping them and sorting them, and it was, it was well over sixty percent of the material in there that was, uh, not recyclable materials. So, that was kind of the, uh, and again, with the level of contamination, it was costing us more to, uh, find a place to dispose of those materials. So, that was the justification for bringing that in, um, out of Public Works where it could be monitored and, uh, people could be helped with recycling.
Okay. Thank you. I knew there was a reason. Um, all right. Um, what's the pleasure of the counsel? I will entertain a motion if there's no more discussion.
I'm, I'll make a motion to, can you put the, the last slide up? I'll make a mo, nope, there you go. Thank you. I'll make a motion to move forward with a notice of intent and schedule a public hearing for in May.
Can you, can you, before you second that, can you be specific with your motion as to what services you are making this motion to agree to? Is that what you were going with? Okay.
Okay. Um, I make a motion, uh, to move forward with a notice of intent, schedule a public hearing for May, involving a twice, continuing with a twice pickup and, um, recycling program on-site where individuals dropping off pay.
Is that with county?
And opening, and opening it up for the county. Thank you.
And can you address the green waste, please?
And not including green waste.
Thank you. We have, is that motion sufficient, Mr. Cooper?
The manager apparently has a comment.
Mr. Walsh?
Vice Mayor, I, I believe that the, the motion is sufficient. If I may just confuse the matter a little bit, um, one thought where we are starting a new program with this recycling, um, the survey did show that, that customers would be open to somewhere between five and ten to, to pay to drop off. Um, if I could, just to, to give staff a little bit of wiggle room and to give counsel a little bit of cushion, I would recommend possibly increasing, so we showed that that cost, based on our assumptions, would be around six-fifty-five per drop-off. I would recommend adding a little bit of cushion to that, somewhere within that five-to-ten-dollar range, just to, should our numbers not, should, should we not see the turnout that we're anticipating, um, those costs would, would obviously go up. So, I would just recommend a little bit of a cushion in there if, if that's something that counsel would like to do.
Do you have a recommendation of a specific number, Mr. Walsh?
I would say if we could add maybe a dollar, a dollar fifty to it, so some seven-fifty, eight dollars, I, I think would give us a little bit of a cushion that if numbers aren't coming in where we assumed, we can at least have a little bit to work with.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dykens? Are you okay with that?
I'm o, I'm okay with that, but I think my motion was open enough, sorry, that, I got this stuff. Um, that the motion wasn't specifically stating six-fifty-five, it was stating, opening it, opening it up to the county and then just going with whatever that price is determined between the five and ten dollars. How's that?
But we need a number.
Between the five and ten dollars.
A specific number. I apologize. Just pick a number that you want.
Seven-fifty-three.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item E, consideration to adopt a notice of intent to add, remove, and increase fees within the citywide comprehensive fee schedule. City staff recently performed a review of the direct benefit services that the city is providing to individuals, businesses, and other agencies throughout the community. In this review, the city found that many services have not been adjusted for seven to twenty-five years, and some direct benefit services were being provided at no charge to the end user. Although cost recovery was the largest component of this review, comparing the city of Kingman's existing and proposed fees to other city fee schedule was a, also a component. It was determined that the city of Kingman's existing and proposed rates are not greatly understated, understated, they are great, are not, pardon me. It was determined that the city of Kingman's existing and proposed rates are not greatly understated or inflated in comparison. Staff recommends council add, remove, and increase fees. Ms. Moline?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, council members. This will be the last item regarding fees for this evening's agenda. As we move into the budget season, this is typically the time that we like to bring these to you so we know the fees that, uh, to expect going into the season. Uh, so, tonight is a consideration to modify fees within the comprehensive fee schedule. And so, what is a comprehensive fee schedule? So, it's basically a list of all of our citywide fees for activities, rentals, permits, licenses, reports, copies, you name it, anything other than our utility services or our airport fees is going to be listed in this comprehensive fee schedule. And the purpose of these fees is to either partially or fully recover the cost of providing those services to the users of those services. The last time that these fees were updated were in February and April of two thousand eighteen, but they were actually performed, the research was performed in two thousand seventeen. So, it's been over seven years since they have performed a full, uh, review. Uh, and as I shared, these do not include fees or rates associated with water, wastewater, solid waste, or our airport services. So, what does the fee review process look like? So, what we end up doing is we update our burden rates for our employees. We update supplies and material costs, vehicle costs, all of, all of the costs that go into providing that service. We also look at any statutory changes. So, sometimes state statute dictates certain fees that must be, uh, applied or assessed for certain services. So, we look at that as well. We also evaluate our credit card fees, or we certainly did this year. We looked at the cost of providing that service. We absorb our credit fees in-house right now, and so, we looked at the cost of that. And then, ultimately, we ended up calculating a cost recovery percentage for each of the divisions or that provide services. So, what are the fees that we reviewed? Well, there are a lot of them, and I'm not going to read through all of them because we're going to get a chance to go through every single one of those. Uh, but the very last fee on there is our Kingman Area Regional Transit System fees. That is the one, uh, fee that we reviewed and are not making any proposed changes to. So, this will be the last that you'll see of this particular fee. So, let's start with our building and permitting fees. So, in your packet, you had several attachments. One of the attachments was the proposed changes to the comprehensive fee schedule. Tried to call out which pages you were going to see those proposed changes on. You'll notice throughout all of that, throughout that entire schedule, that there are some fees that are being proposed to increase, some that are being proposed to be removed, some that are be, being proposed to be renamed or combined. So, there's a whole host of changes. Again, it's been a while since we reviewed it. So, as we go through all of the fees, I'll direct you to the pages that the fees are on. I will also just click here and take us to those fees. Um, we will also cover almost on every division, we'll look at the annual impact, the annual fiscal impact, and which fund that it is going to impact. And then, also, what the cost of each of those programs currently are and the revenues that are currently being generated, or at least over the last two years, fiscal year twenty-four, and what we're expecting for fiscal year twenty-five for those services. So, that's how each of the slides will work. We'll start with building and permitting fees. So, we are looking at evaluating our building permits, our special permits, and our other inspection fees. We'll take a peek at what some of those fees look like in a minute. The annual fiscal impact that we're proposing with all of those fees would be about a forty-thousand-dollar impact to the general fund. Now, currently, the program itself, so the building division of our Development Services Department, Now currently, the program itself, so the building division of our development services department is operating at a deficit. So in fiscal year twenty-four, our actual expenses were about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We collected seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in revenues. For fiscal year twenty-five, you're going to see that those expenses are higher than what they were in fiscal year twenty-four, and that has to do with personnel. We operated pretty slim last year until we, in fiscal year twenty-four, until we were able to bring on full staffing. We also added positions to the building division this fiscal year, hence the majority of that increase. And so we're expecting to collect about eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in revenues. So that's what the, that's the program's cost recovery currently is. I'm going to just go to the next slide so you can get a comparison of what a building permit fee would look like with the proposed fees when we compare it to our neighboring communities. So currently, using a fifteen hundred square foot living space with five hundred square foot, with a five hundred square foot garage and a two hundred square foot porch, the fees would be two thousand eighty-three twenty-one. That's currently. Under the proposed, it would go to two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Now Mojave County charges, would charge about a thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars, Bullhead City a thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, and Lake Havasu would, is currently higher than what the proposed rate is. Now I am going to go back and click on those fees. I also want to point out that I am here to share the data and I helped compile the data, but certainly I am not the subject matter expert in many of these fees. And so if there are specific questions regarding the fees, we have our experts here to address any of the questions that you might have, or certainly Manager Walsh will likely be able to answer them as well. So the fees that are being considered, oops, sorry. So we have, we are proposing a five percent increase across the board on the building valuations. Actually, the fees associated with the building valuations, a five percent fee on the grading permit fees. And just general dollar increases and percent increases on some of the special permits and other inspection fees. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review any of these fees up until this moment, but if there is any specific fee that you want to discuss, or if you would like Director Moquin to talk to any of these fees, we can certainly do that at this time. Otherwise, I can just continue. Okay. All right, so that is the building permit fees. So moving on to our engineering fees. Now our engineering department is funded by the Water Operating Fund, so they don't necessar- they are fully, we cover the cost of our engineering department. However, they are looking to add one fee, and it is for water and wastewater utility inspection fees for outside city limits. So currently, we assess that fee for inside city limits. It's a right-of-way fee that we charge our customers, but we don't have right-of-way in the county, and we're not charging a fee for that, so we're proposing a fee for those inspections. The annual fiscal impact would be seventy thousand dollars to the Water Operating Fund and forty-five thousand dollars to the Wastewater Fund, and that would be a three hundred dollar fee per inspection, per connection, is what that fee looks like. Then we have our fire service fees. So we are looking at plan reviews, facility inspections, false alarm responses, standby, facility use, and trainings and courses. The annual fiscal impact for our fire service fees are less than five thousand dollars to the general fund. Now we know that fire and police definitely don't pay for themselves and aren't expected to, so they generate very little revenue, and the cost of their programs are very high, but because we're sharing this on the other divisions, we wanted to be sure to share this with, with the council on their division as well. So the program's cost recovery for fire is less than one percent. And the revenue generated is, is very, very minimal for the services that are being provided. And so there are a couple of pages of fee increases across the board for fire as well. There are several of them that are being removed also. So looking at general service fees, these are fees that are applied across the board, so not specific to one general department. We're proposing changes to our copy fees, making just one type of copy fee for every division. Right now, we have a variety of fees. And then a return payment fee, so we definitely get bounced checks and bounced payments. And so we're looking to recover the full, the full cost of what that is, which currently it's fifteen dollars, and we are proposing to go to thirty dollars for those. So the impact there, less than a thousand dollars to the general fund, seven thousand dollars to the Water Operating Fund. Moving on to our golf course. So we are looking at proposing some changes to the nine-hole and eighteen-hole rates. And we are looking to establish a resident and a non-resident fee for our nine-holes and eighteen-hole rates. We are also looking to establish a private cart, single rider fee. The changes that we're looking to, to propose or get council and get council's direction on is increasing the nine-holes and eighteen-holes by twenty percent for our non-residents, and then providing a ten percent discount off of that for our residents, or ultimately a ten percent increase for our residents. The annual fiscal impact for that is about a hundred and ten thousand dollars to the general fund. Now the golf course currently is, operates at a deficit. It doesn't generate, you'll see here, enough revenues to sustain the cost of the programs. Even with an additional one hundred and ten thousand dollars that is generating in golf course fees, we will still be operating at a deficit at the golf course. Our golf course staff did reach out to some other neighboring golf courses to determine the rates that are charged at their courses. There is a table here for you to review. There are some courses that include the, the cart fee in the rate itself, others don't. Some have higher rates than us, some don't, so it's really across the board. But we looked at several courses in Mojave Valley, Lake Havasu, Needles, Parker, so many, Bullhead City, so many of the courses that are, are nearby.
Ms. Moline, I have a question. I just want to know what delineates a resident and non-resident? How are we determining that?
So we are determining that on our water system boundaries. So looking at basically, anyone who receives a city water bill would be considered a resident.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So then moving on to our license and permit fees. We are looking at our business, license to our business, change to our business licenses, and that's to comply with the code that was recently adopted. And then some changes to our special events, a very minimal impact of about two thousand dollars to the general fund. You'll see that the city clerk's office and the finance office certainly operate at a deficit. We generate very little revenue, and so this will have very minimal impact. Our cost recovery is five to six percent. Looking at our parks and our recreation and our pool fees. Looking to, looking to change our park, recreation, organized league usage, facilities, and pool fees across the board. An annual fiscal impact with all of those changes of about twenty-five thousand dollars to the general fund. So looking at parks, it operates at a deficit, you'll see here in fiscal year twenty-four and what we're expecting in fiscal year twenty-five. A deficit of two point six million dollars for parks. And then recreation is also operating at a deficit of about four hundred and forty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And pools also operates at a deficit of about four hundred and seventy-seven to five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Now those deficits are offset, of course, with our sales tax dollars and our state shared revenues. That's how we make up that difference. We're also proposing changes to our planning fees, code amendments, CUPs, minor land divisions, site plan reviews, and application fees. Annual fiscal impact would be less than ten thousand dollars to the general fund, and you'll see that the planning and zoning division of our development services department also operates at a deficit, and the program's cost recovery is between five to seven percent. Police services, they are looking to change their alarm fees and audio/video reduction. And the audio/video reduction is actually a statutory requirement, so we would, we would need to move forward with that one. Annual, annual fiscal impact of less than a thousand dollars to the general fund. Again, public safety is expected to operate at a deficit. They generate very little revenues. And so it's about thirteen million, five hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty-five in, in a deficit. And then tourism. So we've got a couple of conference rooms up at the powerhouse that get asked to be utilized, and we have allowed associations and organizations to do so in the past. We don't have a fee for that, though. So our powerhouse or our tourism department has said maybe we should charge a fee for that, and that makes sense. We've got in our fire department, conference rooms that we are charging for, training rooms that have a fee associated with it. And so there are some fees associated with those conference rooms in the upstairs of the powerhouse. So for the conference room rentals, and the fiscal impact there would be less than twenty-five hundred dollars to the powerhouse fund. So I want to cover just a few more slides, and then if there are any specific questions or direction, then we can certainly talk to that. But I want to give you an idea of what all of these fees and how they impact the different funds. So if all of the fees were adopted as presented, it would be a fiscal impact of about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars to the general fund, seventy-seven thousand dollars to the Water Operating Fund, forty-five thousand dollars to the Wastewater Fund, and twenty-five hundred dollars to the powerhouse fund. I shared that we looked at credit card fees and that we currently absorb all of the fees for our customers and the users of our services. I broke this down by all of the departments that actually collect credit card fees as a payment, and what each of those divisions absorbs in their budgets for the, the credit card fees. And so you'll see all of the divisions that, that do incur those costs. I've got the group of general fund divisions that end up paying a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We absorb that cost to allow for credit card payment fees, development services being the largest of the group. And then we have our tourism department, and that is all for retail sales, right? They, people come in and purchase all the merchandise, pay credit cards for that. Our transit system also, and then we have our Water Operating Fund, so we have our engineering department and our utility billing department. And our utility billing department certainly has the largest cost of credit card fees. This is just being brought to you for consideration of whether or not you want to continue to absorb those fees, just an initial discussion on that. We know that Mojave County actually passes all of their credit card fees on to their customers. However, our neighboring communities do not. They absorb all of the fees for their customers. But again, just some food, food for thought for, for the council. I don't know, Manager Walsh, if you have anything else that you wanted to add on that? Okay. All right, so with that, not sure of the direction that council wants to go, if there are certain fees or discussion items that you want to have.
Council, comments for Ms. Moline, discussion?
I have one.
Counselor Walker?
And this is probably more of a Carl and Manager Walsh deal. On the golf course, local, is there any way we can include Valley Vista, the Greater Kingman area, Valley Vista, the, you know, Pinion Pines? Pinion Pines, Walpies, Valley Vista.
You can define that area.
Because those are people that shop and live in Kingman.
I, I think, like I say, you can define the residence area however you wanted to find it.
Maybe if we can have staff bring that back to us with, that's my thought. I don't know what the rest of the council's thoughts are.
I, I could support that.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Walker, I, I think the intent initially when we looked at it was based on water usage because of the golf course and, and the water usage that goes to the golf course. But yeah, no, ultimately, that, that would be a council decision, what that definition of a, of a local person would be. So if, if we wanted to do similar to like we do with the commissions, Greater Kingman area, where basically their, their mailing address has Kingman on it, that would probably make it easier for golf staff, you see the, the driver's license and have that.
Because all those people spend their dollars in Kingman, they're, they're local. I mean, somebody with a Bullhead address, no. But I mean, Golden Valley, Valley Vista, you know, Walpies.
Golden Valley doesn't, I believe, doesn't have a Kingman address.
But they're part of our community.
I've just explained.
But I'm just, it's for the topic to talk about, so.
Does anybody, would you like to include Golden Valley? Is that what you're proposing?
I don't know if we have any golfers from there, but I mean, I consider them local. They spend their money here, most of them.
Mr. Savage?
I got two things. First with you, Tina, thank you. A lot of companies now are charging extra for credit card processing, so they're not eating that cost. I think that's something we should look at. I know with the Moose Lodge, we're saving thousands and thousands of dollars a year now just by changing over the POS system and adding a four percent surcharge on credit cards. So that's my feeling about it. I don't think the city should be eating those fees. Second is for Mike. Since we're talking about golf, what type of tracking do you, do you keep with where the golfers are coming from? Do you have any database of that? Is it just mostly local anyways?
No, it's not mostly local. We have a lot of place from outside, too.
Okay, so you got the people coming from Havasu and Bullhead and all that stuff, and then tourist and all that stuff. Okay, thank you.
I, I had a question for Mr. Mearsman as well. You were too fast for me.
Sorry about that.
Do you know what percentage of golfers at the golf course are non-resident golfers?
I don't have that information because we haven't had a non-resident rate, so.
Okay.
It would be hard to, to track that right now.
Okay, all right.
I mean, we have addresses for season pass holders, but we don't have it for the daily fee people.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you. Anybody else before Mr. Mearsman sits down? All right.
And if I can share on that, because we didn't have the data and we don't have the data on residents versus non-residents. We were very conservative, Councilman Walker, in determining the revenue and the rates, and assuming that the majority of the golfers were local and would have a resident rate. So I would think that what was proposed and what's being anticipated to be collected would be in line with having Valley Vista or Golden Valley or any of those customers be included in that resident rate. You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments to support Counselor Savage's comments on the credit card processing fees? Counselor Dykens?
The, is the total of, of all of that, the three thirty-two, or is that just the water operating?
That is just the wa- water operating is three thirty-two. So in total, we're looking at one thirty-one sixty, one seventy, about five hundred thousand dollars.
That's a lot of money for the city to lose just because somebody doesn't want to pay in cash. I think we should at least look at what we could do to have that changed. If I'm too lazy to go to the bank and pay cash, then maybe I should pay a four percent fee for using my credit card, so.
Thank you. I, I wanted to ask a question. What options do we have for payment for our utility customers? Because in the, in the, the path I'm going on is they come to the window, they use the credit card or debit card. That's where the, they're incurred, we are incurring those fees, correct?
Actually, no, we also have automatic credit card payments that we allow for, for our online customers as well. You can pay online through our payment portal, and a lot of those payments are credit card as well. And our IVR system, our call-in, our phone-in system is, is credit card or debit card only. So most of those fees are being, are, are, the cost is from our online payment portal and from the IVR system primarily, not the customers at the counter.
And there's no other option from the credit card processing companies to alleviate? I mean, some, sometimes the utility companies will say, you know, you can pay by credit card, it's this kind of a convenience fee. You can pay by, you know, bank online, there is no fee. What I'm trying to find is that option to where if they do want to do an electronic payment, if they want to put in their bank information, or if they, if there's an option for them to pay and not have that processing fee, I'm just trying to give options other than cash or check or credit card.
So, so let me answer your question about the different payment options. So we have our online payment portal, and through our online payment portal, you can pay with a credit card, a debit card. You can pay with Google Pay, Apple Pay, Venmo, all of those options. We also have bank draft. We also have bill pay through the banking as an option. And then we have cash and we have check. And then we have cash and we have check. And then we have our IVR system that you can phone in. So a whole variety of options. As far as the convenience fee, so we currently are getting the best rate for our utility customers because we are absorbing it and because they are utility customers. So we are already getting a great rate from our merchant card processor. If we wanted to pass the fee on to the customer, it would be exactly that. It would be a convenience fee that we would end up charging. It would be just another fee on their bill, just like you see whenever you pay at the county or you pay for other types of services online. And then that fee would then be collected by the city and it would offset the costs for the, uh, merchant, for the credit card fees. That's how that would work.
So a bank draft, if they were to go online and provide their bank information, there is no charge to the city nor to the utility customer?
That is correct.
Okay. So there is an option out there for non-payment?
For electronic, yes.
All right, perfect. Cause I, I am definitely in favor of us not absorbing this, this, you know, e- every merchant that we go to these days is passing this on, so, um, the only thing we're not asking for is a tip, right? So, not yet. So, um, you know, I, I am definitely in line with, uh, the council comments for, uh, not continuing to absorb this, uh, credit card fee and letting the public know there is an option out there to where you don't have to incur this. So, thank you.
And if I can share on the utility billing, it's a big number, right? It's over $300,000 that we're absorbing. Well, um, not in fiscal year '26. If this was something the council wanted to implement for the next fiscal year, it would definitely impact our rate increases in fiscal year '27 and fiscal year '28. So it would, um, it would be another dollar or so in savings that our customers would receive, so it wouldn't be as high of a, of an increase either. Um, and Manager Walsh has shared that, you know, i- it, there's a fairness issue, right? That the customers that are paying credit card, all of the customers are having to really pay for that cost too. So, um, that's also something, uh, to consider. But definitely wanted to point it out that that will make a difference in future rate increases, if that's something the council wanted to entertain going forward.
That's a very good point, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, suggestions? All right, I will entertain a motion. Please be specific with your motion. Just to clarify, Carl, would you like that motion to be, um, as E states? And then would you like a separate motion for the credit card fees because it does not include that? Or would you like us to include the credit card fees in the original motion?
Separate.
Okay, perfect. I think that helps.
I'll make a motion to accept item E, consideration to adopt a notice of intent to add, remove, and increase fees within the citywide comprehension fees schedule.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. Would you like to make the second motion?
I would like to make a second motion.
Thank you.
I would like us to consider, um, uh, getting rid of, uh, the cost of the city with credit card purchases.
How would you like that?
Well, I wanted to just make sure that we want to, uh, absorb, that we want to pass on the fee for all of these services. Right now at the powerhouse, right, we're going, people come in and purchase merchandise, so we want to pass on the fee for that as well to the customers? Okay, just want to clarify.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those signify, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
If I might, uh, if I might ask just for an additional motion regarding the, uh, residency for the golf rates, um, where we have, basically, we've approved the, the 20% increase with a 10% decrease for residents. I- if council would like to entertain that motion, basically defining what that resident is.
All right, Counselor Walker, would you like to make that motion? What is your definition of a resident, a Kingman's resident?
I would like council staff to review the, what is the resident area for our golf rates?
Would you like to be s-?
Will that work with the fees or do we need to have that?
No, we just, can you just tell us if you'd like the greater Kingman area, which would include Golden Valley and Valley Vista?
I would make a motion to have the golf course acknowledged to residents out of the Kingman, Golden Valley, Valley Vista, Walpies, uh, I think those are Kingman address. I guess in any way.
No, I don't think so. All right, okay. Perfect, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, uh, all those in favor signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thanks, Ms. Moline. All right. Item, item number F, request for motion to reconsider traffic interchange renaming motion from February 4th to, uh, 2025 council meeting. At the March 4th, 2025 council meeting, Councilmember Dykens requested a motion to reconsider the Rancho Santa Fe traffic interchange name change motion that was made after the discussion of that topic at the February 4th, 2025 council meeting. The motion, most, motion at issue was Councilmember Staley made a motion to allow the public to choose the name of the interchange from a list of five to six names in a public vote and the cost to be covered by fundraising and the city if needed. Councilmember Ward seconded the motion was approved by the following. Mayor Watkins, Councilmember Dykens, Councilmember Savage, Councilmember Scott Staley, Councilmember Walker, and Councilmember Ward were all aye votes. Nay vote was Vice Mayor, uh, Samley. The motion to reconsider is specifically about the motion listed above. It must be seconded and may be debated. If the motion to reconsider passes, then the council will revisit the original motion. The council may amend that motion, re-vote on the motion, take other action, or table to an upcoming meeting. If the motion to reconsider fails, then the original motion is still in place. Counsel discretion.
So if you want me to just kind of jump in with this?
I would really appreciate that, Carl.
So, this is why I love Robert's Rules of Order because different interpretations, uh, kind of come up with some different ways to proceed with this. So it would be my recommendation is, I think, because Councilmember Dykens is the, the one that requested this motion to reconsider, he'd just make a motion to reconsider this item from the February, uh, 4th meeting, or the March 4th meeting, I apologize. No, February 4th, see, I'm getting confused. If he makes that motion, then we just have to wait for a second. If there is a second, then you debate it. If there's no second, then that, that motion fails.
Okay. Counselor Dykens?
The purpose for me to bring this forward was for the fact that I had been discussing throughout the council meeting that I was not, I wa- I was in favor of a name change and funding by volunteers or donations, but was opposed to the city paying part or any, all or part of the cost for any, any name change. When the vote came forward, I will admittedly state that I was totally confused and I voted in favor of spending city money, which is contrary to what I had said. So just to clear my conscience, this is why I'm requesting it to come forward. So I make a motion to reconsider the traffic interchange renaming motion from February 4th council meeting.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and we have a second. As a point of order, may I vote?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we still have Mayor Watkins?
He appears to be muted.
Yes, Eric.
Did you hear the motion?
Sorry, Vice.
We're voting. Do you have a vote?
Yes. Aye also.
Okay. Any, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So now what you have on the table is the original motion, which was to allow the public to choose the name of the interchange from a list of five to six names from a public vote and the cost to be covered by fundraising and the city if needed. So what you can do is you can re-vote on that original motion. You could make a motion to amend, which is an additional, it's, it's a subsequent motion to the original motion. And I would say if you were looking to motion to amend, cause I gather some of you don't want, uh, the city to participate in the paying, I'm just making an example. So you could say I have, make a motion to amend, uh, to remove and the city if needed. Uh, if you want to table it for discussion at another meeting, whatever you'd like to, to entertain. So I will help as we work through this because I would say this is actually the first time we've ever done a motion to reconsider in 22 years that I've been here, working on 23, so it's a, it's a learning experience for all of us. I'll just try and keep us in order.
All right, thank you. I will entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion and be the troublemaker to do it, that we do all of what he just said by removing the, the city if needed from it, which would mean we can make a name change, we can collect donations to pay for it in full, but no money being spent by the city.
I think that's pretty clear.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right.
Do we have a discussion?
You can.
We can now have discussion, absolutely.
I think we still have a hornet's nest because are we going to consider only people that come up with a name and funding? Or are we going to put it back out to the public to try to get a name? What are we going to do? I think we need to be more specific on how we are going to entertain these names. Am I the only one that sees it that way or?
No, I, I do, I do see your point.
And I don't think we should throw this out there and then entertain it on several more meetings. We need to make a decision on what we want to do, how we want to receive this and run with it.
So the way the motion states is that if we have a name change with no funding, the name stays the same?
Okay.
That is how I interpret the motion.
Okay.
If we.
But we're not taking the public's vote, just the head vote getter. If they don't come up with the money, they're not going to get it.
If we have the funding from an outside source other than the city,
Okay.
there will be a name change.
Okay.
If we have, if we have no funding and it stays Rancho Santa Fe. We, we can also reconsider everything and postpone. So, I mean, it's council's pleasure. We have a motion and a second right now that states that if we have a name change, we must have funding.
Call for the vote.
All right.
Vice, Vice Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, just, just to put a little bit in, um, I, I believe the mayor's still online. Um, just to, I, I think maybe to, to reassure council a little bit on as far as the vote goes, um, we have four names that are out there. We are scheduled on the first to bring basically the results of that survey back. Mr. Gaines had mentioned previously and called to the public that if, if the name that they are backing is selected, that they would have the funding for it. I believe Mayor Watkins has mentioned that if, uh, another name is selected, um, that he would, uh, provide the funding for that name. So I believe we have, and then if it's, if it remains Rancho Santa Fe, um, there's no cost involved with that. So I believe we have three out of the four names that were selected that, that at least have
Are funded.
commitment to being funded. So I see, I think there's some reassurance there. The only one that, that we wouldn't have, that we don't have a commitment for funding would be the Army Airfield, uh, name. So I, I think if that one came out on top, then yeah, we could have that, that issue.
So the way I understand this is that if only those two names are selected, they will be funded by private citizens. If, if Rancho Santa Fe is selected, it's going to be a moot point. Okay.
It's already funded.
Call for the vote.
So I just want to point out that the Councilman Walker just asked, called for the vote.
Right.
Unless you have any further discussion, you might want to just move forward with that. And this vote is just on the amendment currently. So you've got a motion to approve the, the, the current motion, then there's a secondary motion to amend that prior motion, which is removing the, the city. So what you'll do is vote on the amendment. If that pale, passes, that removes that language. Then you would vote again on the original motion, but it will not have the city language. I love Robert's Rules of Order.
I, I understand. I've, and we'll honor Councilman Walker's request, we'll call for the vote. We'll call vote, Annie, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you also restate the motion, please?
The motion on the table is a motion to amend and remove city if needed from the original motion from February 4th, 2025. Mayor Watkins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Samley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dykens?
Yes.
Councilmember Savage?
Yes.
Councilmember Staley is absent, Councilmember Walker?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So now you have the other, the original motion, but minus the, uh, the city input or the city contribution, contribution.
Okay, who wants to tackle that motion?
Well, that, that motion already is on the table.
Okay.
It's already been seconded, you just made a motion to change it.
We'll call for the vote.
Teresa State, the motion is to allow the public to choose the name of the interchange from a list of five to six names in a public vote and the cost to be covered by fundraising. Mayor Watkins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Samley?
Yes.
Councilmember Savage?
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Dykens?
Yes.
Councilmember Staley is absent, Councilmember Walker?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That was, that was a lot of fun.
Now you only get to redo this in the, the next meeting.
All right, so now we're going to, uh, move to, uh, department reports, legislative update. I see Tom Dorn is on the line, welcome, Mr. Dorn. I apologize for all of the entertainment.
You're on mute.
Okay, am I there?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
I'm on the camera. Okay, all right, well, I'm here. Um, I apologize, something's wrong, obviously wrong with my camera. Oh, there it is. I had it off, okay. Hi. Vice Mayor, members of the council, uh, thank you for having me, to give you a quick legislative update. Uh, my thought is maybe I should just stand for questions. Um, it is, uh, eight o'clock, you guys have been working very, very hard. And, uh, uh, I mean, I can go on and on and talking about the legislature, but I don't know if you want to, um, want to do all that. So Madam Vice Mayor, do you want me to just report on a few things or?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, I'll just proceed. All right, um, where we're at, uh, the, the session, we have a couple more weeks of bills to be heard, uh, and, and then there'll be an appropriations committee hearing where those that are still with the money, uh, will have to move through. Right now we have, uh, about a $560 million, uh, surplus, uh, but we fully expect that will be eaten away by some of the things that are, that you're hearing in the news, how the disability funding, uh, over, uh, there's an overage on empowerment scholarships, uh, the Department of Child Safety lately, uh, the Congress Care, that just was in the news. So there's quite a bit that is, um, going to eat away at that 560 million. And, you know, Representative Gillette, he's pushing for our transportation projects and I was talking to him today and, and, you know, Eastern is the priority that we had, have submitted to him, but, uh, we'll see where things go on all of this spending that needs to occur because as, as the Republicans put it, you know, the governor is not given a heads up, uh, on, on the needs for these supplemental, uh, appropriations. And so it's. And so, it's, it's a surprise to them. The Democrats fire back and say, no, you knew about it. We just haven't dealt with it yet. So, we'll see what happens. And also, just, you know, Representative Gillette, he's also working on behalf of the Speaker in digging into some additional funding issues at, at agencies. And so, it will be interesting to see what comes out of that, may lead to an interim study committee that, that will be involved in. With regard to the major issues happening, of course, water is the big one. 1520, it got out of the House. That is the, the Dunn bill, Senator Tim Dunn. That's the one that the Rural Working Group has been working on. It got out, 18 to 10. We did have one Democrat join the Republicans on that. She's a Phoenix Democrat, but she's very interested in housing. So, I think that was part of her calculus in deciding that. Police and fire, I know that there's, there's some legislation with regard to a $4.5 million appropriation to help with police information, police records management. And I think the ultimate goal there, and I don't know if your, your police department's been involved in this at all, but the ultimate goal is to make sure there's a statewide records management sharing for the police departments, similar to, you know, information sharing, you know, national, with crime and with databases. But this is, it would connect all of the departments within the state of Arizona, led by the state of Arizona. So, that's something that we're following. And there's also some fire grants for fire departments that, that's also out there, 6.5 million that legislation's running through. I already mentioned about the eastern, that's the priority, even though we do have the other ones that are on the list. But when, of course, Mr. Gillette's focusing on, on the one with the likelihood of hopefully getting something out of it. Regarding the housing, you're familiar with, I'm sure you've heard about what's going on there, the Smarter Home Act, which basically annihilates general planning for, for a city, planning and zoning. It's basically the home builders kind of running, you know, doing whatever they want with regard to smarter, you know, the league has their plan. And then there's also the bill that Senator Bolick from North Phoenix is running that would basically say that you, it kind of undoes all the regulations in planning and zoning and, and the amount of housing that can be put on acreage. And this would be, also, they're talking about lowering the thresholds from 70,000 down to 30,000 for cities. So, it would really, it would preempt planning and zoning statewide. So, that's Senate Bill 1229 that we are looking at. And then also, the, you might have heard about, it's called Yes in God's Backyard Bill. This is brought to us by Representative Livingston. This is, would allow churches to put housing on their excess property. And obviously, this would be a preemption of the cities deciding whether or not this should be allowed. But they moved from it being more of apartments to now you could, a church, if they have excess property, they could put singles family homes on there instead. So, we'll see how that, that plays out. You know, the governor is eager to do something with regard to housing, as is the legislature and work for, but we, cities are, you know, the people of, like us, that are working with cities and planners, they are opposed to just, because we're having this housing crisis, let's completely gut the city's ability to do their own planning and zoning and their general plans. So, I think the cities are going to hold firm on that, in my opinion. Economic development, there are a few other, few issues there, one to mention on the tourism improvement areas. There, that legislation actually would allow, you know, for the Route 66 effort, if you wanted to align and do a tax on yourself all the way across High 40 for tourism improvement and, uh, promotion for the Route 66. That legislation's moving along 2873. And the one big thing, just to end on in the interest of time, is this whole Senate Bill 1013 or the SCR, this Senate concurrent resolution, if the governor doesn't sign the bill, that would do the three, three, two-thirds, require two-thirds of vote of the council in order to, in order to raise taxes or, or fees or anything. Some of the things you've been talking about tonight, it would require two-thirds of your council to allow it to go into effect. So, and, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but those are some of the key issues right now that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Tom. Was that House Bill 2413 you said?
Uh, which one?
The two-thirds vote?
Oh, that's Senate Bill 1013.
Oh, gosh. 1013.
1013.
It's late.
And then, yeah, and SCR. So, and like many of these bills, as you all know, if the, if the governor is going to veto it, the Republican majority in the House and the Senate has a resolution ready to go that would actually move the bill through both the House and the Senate and to the Secretary of State, and he would then put it on the November 26 ballot. So, it's their way of getting around to the governor and going straight to the voters on these issues. Certainly, probably most cities, I mean, we've had a whole bunch of mayors down here testifying in opposition to that. I mean, just let the cities decide if they need to raise fees, when and if they do, or lower them too, when and if they want to. But this, this is something that they, they, they deal with at the legislature with Proposition 108 that was passed, you know, 30 years ago. You need two-thirds of the legislature in order to raise taxes. And so, this idea is to pass it on down to cities and counties.
All right, thank you. Do we have any question? Councilor Savage?
Hi, Tom. A question about that two-thirds. Now, I'm sure you know that we cannot pass a taxing increase here in the city. Does that change that?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Madam Vice Mayor, Councilman?
To expand on that just a bit, the two-thirds is related to fees. So, like, we went through fees tonight.
Okay.
We would be required to have a two-thirds in order to pass any of those fees that we just?
All right, any other comments or questions for Tom? I did want you to watch House Bill 2411. Are you familiar with that one?
Yeah. Do you have the title on it?
I do not have the title on it. I just wanted you to get information. It has to do with bringing alcohol, outside alcohol into the golf courses, like municipal golf courses.
Yeah, BYOB bill, yeah.
Yes.
That one.
Appropriately named the BYOB bill.
Beer girl on the cart on the golf course, I know. Yeah, you would bring your own. It would allow that. I don't know the status of it. I'll check and let you know.
I think it's moving. And I, I think it's being supported by our local legislators too. So, could you just kind of give us an update on that via email? That'd be great.
Sure, you bet.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? Oh, Manager Walsh?
Just a couple, Tom, I think if we can, I'll, I'll catch up with you tomorrow, but I think we want to look at our priority as far as transportation. I believe our Rancho Airway project would, would take a higher priority than, than the eastern project. So, just making that connection. So, if we can, I'll, I'll catch up with you tomorrow and we can communicate that to Senator, or Representative Gillette. And then if I could ask one question, Annie is very interested to know how the publication bill is going.
Oh, yes, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, Senate Bill 1073. Senator Angus worked very hard on that, and we are grateful for her efforts. We actually talked to her about it before she was even in office, and, and we knew that the, the counties were going to do it. And so, she, she put them together. And so, it's now on Senate Bill 1073 and moving along.
Okay, great. Any other comments, questions, requests for Tom? All right, thank you, Tom, for your time. We appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. I hope you wrap up soon.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
All right, item number nine, announcements by mayor, council members, city manager. We'll start with you, Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Nothing tonight.
All right, Councilor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Council Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Council Ward?
Earlier in the week, I attended the, with the Economic Development Tourism Group, the Origin Mine. We did a tour of that mine. It's much larger than anyone would think when you get up inside of it. And right now, they currently have 400-plus employees, and they may, by the time they're in full production, have over 600.
Oh, wow.
And it's, they're building a new crusher, putting out all new conveyors. I mean, it's quite an operation.
All right, thank you for that. Mayor Watkins?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome. Um, in, on behalf of our Parks and Rec, I just wanted to make an announcement that they're doing smores and stories. So, Parks and Rec, it's a sunset event of smores and stories at Centennial Park, March 28th, that's 6:45, $2 per person, all ages, three and under are free. So, contact the Parks and Rec Department for more information and to register by March 26th. I have nothing else to report. Number 10 on our agenda, council request for future reports and updates. Council Walker? Council Savage?
Nothing.
Council Ward?
Nothing.
Council Dykens? Mayor Watkins?
Nothing.
I have nothing either. We do not have an executive session this evening, so this meeting is adjourned.